All right. Good evening. Full house tonight. All right, I now call the August 2nd, 2022 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Tonight's invocation is going to be given by our Erlanger Police Chaplain, Brian Evans. Thank you so much for being here. Please rise for the pledge. Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Elmore, present. Mr. Cahill. Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Hermes. Mr. Doan.
Present.
Mr. Meyer.
Present.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Mr. Nipper. Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Thank you. You've received a copy of the minutes for the July 5th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting and the July 19th, 2022 Special Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Kyle, Ms. Elmore. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Ms. Reckers.
We've received a request from you and Kyle Rader to surplus property. Are we, would you like to add that to the agenda?
We actually amended the already existing surplus legislation and we were able to just add it on. There's like two addition, or there, I think there were only two, and then we added on five.
Okay. Never mind.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes, Mayor, I just, I know I had mentioned to some council that I was gonna make a motion to put an item that was omitted from the agenda. After discussion with Mr. Gatlin, I'll talk a little bit more about that in New Business, but we'll be looking for potentially a special meeting at the August 16th meeting to discuss and potentially have a first reading at that point.
Do you want to say the topic? I don't think you've mentioned it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is in relation to our capital fund and a balance transfer from our unrestricted reserves into, into capital and actually enumerate the list of items that, that we're gonna include in there. So I can read through those when we get to New Business, just to kind of share, because I think Mr. Gatlin is gonna have a draft potentially this week for us to circulate to council.
Ms. Jasper Lucas, did you have a question? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Any other questions or additions to be made at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right. Onto special presentations. Our first one this evening, we have the CEO of Maddie's House here with us, Julie Rowley. Thank you so much for being here. You're a special guest of Diana Nicely, right? Oh, if you can, if you can hit the orange button. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Diana, for the invitation and honored to be present here at your council meeting tonight. Thank you so much for having me. I have a story to tell you and my, my daughter, at the young age of 24, took her own life. This was Maddie. She was a daughter. She was a sister to her two brothers, Kyle and Carter, and her sister Chelsea. She was granddaughter to Hamilton County Sheriff, Simon Lees, and Margie, my mom and dad. She was a friend. She was a girlfriend to her beloved boyfriend, John. She was a cheerleader. She, I could, I could go on and on and list, list what and who Chelsea, Maddie was, but Maddie was most of all, a fun-loving, wonderful girl who had extreme mental health issues. The worst thing that could have happened to her in high school did. A young man took advantage of Maddie and unbeknownst to the family sexually abused her and she started down the road of PTSD. And we all know that, what that means and depression and anxiety. And it just turned and turned and the devil just kept coming back. And she, she, she went down the road of addiction too, trying to subdue the feelings that she felt with alcohol and drugs. And we fought this disease for 10 years. She went in and out of rehabs, in and out of psych units at hospitals. She'd be good, she'd come out, she'd be happy, she'd be healthy, she'd be on medication that kind of kept her even keeled, helping with her anxiety and depression. But when she got out, there was nothing to really catch her. We have great rehabs. We work with Sun Behavioral Health, that's right here in Kentucky. We have the Linder Center of Hope. Maddie was at all of them. Beckett Springs, Sun Behavioral Health, Linder Center, St. Elizabeth. I could go on and I could list them. But the one thing missing was when she got out, that the doctors would tell her to go to 90 meetings in 90 days, and we did. I went to everyone with her. I'd go to the midnight meetings. I'd come to Kentucky, to the young, young adult meeting. I'd go to the, the midnight bonfire meetings. We'd go anywhere we could go to try something different. But an hour at a meeting, at an NA or an AA meeting is, is not enough. It's just not enough. Going to your psychologist, your psychiatrist, you get 50 minutes. Well, when that 50 minutes is up, it's time for you to leave and you go home and come back next week or make another appointment. But we didn't, we had to lose Maddie to listen to Maddie. Maddie always said, "Mom, I need somewhere when I get out, when I'm healthy, somewhere to keep building my bridge to help me, something to keep me going." So when we lost Maddie, I did numerous focus groups throughout all her different rehabs and compiled a packet about this big. I'd go tell Maddie's story at different rehabs and I'd talk to the people that were there or in psych units to tell me, "What do you need when you get out?" And it's the exact same thing Maddie said she needed. So I wear camo because I'm at war with addiction and mental health, along with any other moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, brothers, sisters that have lost anybody senselessly to suicide. It is, you should not be burying your child. Your child should bury you. And like I said, I had to lose Maddie to listen to her. And after doing the extensive focus groups, Mercy Health heard about what we were doing. And we opened a little annex, we opened a storefront on the west side of town. A friend gave it to me and said, "Julie, do what you said you were gonna do. Get this open and start helping people." So we have a 2,200 square foot storefront called the Annex we've been working out of, and we serve about 350 people a week in our annex. And Mercy Health has heard our story and they partnered with us. And I think there's a video that I sent in that I think we're gonna show here.
Good evening. I'm John Starcher, CEO of Bon Secor Mercy Health, the parent organization of Mercy Health. It was at last year's telethon that Steve and Julie Rowley shared with us Maddie's story. The tragedy of their daughter's death led them to this important journey, creating an uplifting, judgment-free environment that offers health, hope, and healing to young adults who are fighting addiction and mental illness. Mercy Health is a leader in addressing opiate abuse and addiction, so we're especially honored to join Steve and Julie and the many volunteers and supporters of Maddie's House. Since Thanksgiving, Maddie's House, the Annex, has been providing therapeutic and educational sessions, along with fun events, helping people heal and reconnect with the world. The response has been incredible and the Annex is bursting at the seams. During last year's telethon, Mercy Health pledged to provide the land on which Maddie's House would be built. I am pleased to announce that we're doing much more than that. Mercy Health is donating a lovely 7,000 square foot residence that's ready to be transformed into Maddie's House. It's located on a 1.4 acre parcel of land on the former Powell Crosley Estate in Mount Airy. This gift is possible because the Franciscan Sisters of the Poor, who have occupied this beautiful home since 1963, eagerly embraced Maddie's House and recently moved out to make room for this worthy cause. I'm also excited to share that we've enlisted the charitable support of Champlin Architecture and Danus Construction for this project. Through their expertise, this lovely home will be renovated to accommodate events and group sessions in a welcoming, open, and uplifting environment for all who come. Mercy Health, Champlin, and Danus are proud to be a part of making Maddie's vision a reality and in honoring her legacy. Please join with me in supporting Maddie's House so that more young adults will have a safe place to relax and heal as they recover from addiction and mental illness. God bless.
I just call that one of Maddie miracles. After losing Maddie, it was the worst horror day to have Hamilton County Sheriff's Department Officer, who worked for my father, knocking on our front door. But I do know there's a plan to everything and God chose Maddie because he knew this needed to be done. We did a presentation at one of their conventions and they introduced my husband and I. They really feel Maddie's House will be a place that we will bring to other states. We, this is the first one of many and we're real excited about that opportunity to help save other families from the very large hole in our hearts that, that we have. And I'm gonna leave you on one statistic. If I can get my phone open here. On average, here in Kentucky, one person dies by suicide every 11 hours in your state. So we want to bring Maddie's House to your state next. And any support you can give to us, you know, we're serving Kentucky residents now at our annex. We have, one of our leads on Monday night comes all the way from Independence, Kentucky to come to Maddie's Annex. And we have Covington residents, we have Erlanger residents, I can go on with the list. So Maddie's, there's no place like Maddie's House. And with this new gift, the, the new, all the people will be able to serve and the programs will be able to expand. We're really thrilled and just any support we can get just from financial and from just personal support and just getting the word out and marketing who we are and what we're doing, we will save lives. And together, we're all better. Together, one person can't do this, but together, we can all work together to make a difference and save somebody else's life. Thanks so much. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight with you and listen to my story and Maddie's story. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing with us. It's always really important to understand all the resources that are available, not just the ones that are here in Northern Kentucky, but we go across the river just as much. So thank you for being here. All right. So our next special presentation are our Oath of Officers. Chief Godsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and guests. We have two awesome individuals joining our team. I'll introduce you to them first. It will be Danny Honaker. If you want to come up. Danny comes to us from Alexandria Fire Department, where he started as an explorer in 2011. Danny currently resides in Dry Ridge with his wife, Molly, and children Julia and Harrison. In his free time, Danny enjoys pretty much anything that gets him outside, like running, hiking, and home projects. Danny is very eager to learn his new position and to become the best that he can at his job. Next is Brayden Demusio. Brayden comes to us from Burlington Fire Department, where he started as a junior firefighter three years ago. He also completed the Northern Kentucky Recruit Class and received his EMT certification from Gateway. Brayden currently resides in Union with his parents, Chris and Brett, and two dogs, Luger and Larkin. He enjoys going out on the lake, racing dirt bikes, and spending time with family and friends. Brayden has a love for community and a passion for serving others. Brayden and Danny. Got your guests.
Okay, you guys are gonna state your name after I say aye, okay? And I'm gonna do, we're gonna do these together. I do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me God. Congratulations. It's a wonderful night when we add people to our family. So welcome and thanks for being here. All right. Randy, can you look at the, the little sign-in sheet right there for me, please? The one that's on the table? Yeah. If you can bring it here, please. I should have grabbed it. All right. This evening, we do have two individuals signed up for public comment. Our first is Renee Wilson. If you come to the podium and just hit the orange button.
Good evening. My name is Renee Wilson and I am a proud resident of Erlanger. I come today to thank you for the resolution for Juneteenth and we were just so proud to have such a document to commemorate Juneteenth. I also would like to volunteer or let you know that I would be welcome, I'd be glad to give a prayer at the beginning of the council meeting. So if you let me know how I go about to do that, I would love to have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next on the list is Serena Owen.
Good evening. I'm your school board member, Serena Owen, for the Erlanger Elsmere School District. And it's great to see you, Mayor, Council, all residents, family and friends in Erlanger, Kentucky, and I hope you're having a blessed day. So wanted to also thank you for the proclamation and wanted to find out how those who would like to receive a copy, there weren't any, like hard copies, so we were wondering how we might be able to get a hard copy of the proclamation, the Juneteenth proclamation. Is there, is there a special way that we can request that or how can we get a hard copy?
I can get you a copy.
Awesome. Thank you. And then also wanted to invite the community out. You've probably seen it on the city of Erlanger's social media and website, as well as the Erlanger and Elsmere Schools website. Where every year, except for last year with COVID, and so the past couple of years, we haven't had our community block party that's organized by our awesome Family Resource Centers within the school district. But this year, it's back. So wanted to invite all community members and, you know, the council to come out to our community block party, where the city's gonna have a booth, the city of Erlanger, the city of Elsmere will have a booth, other community-based organizations and businesses will also be there. For the kids, Kona Ice will be there. There'll be free food, there'll be games, lots of fun activities that are engaging and we welcome you. Again, there's more information and a copy of the flyer on the city of Erlanger's Facebook page and the Erlanger and Elsmere Schools website, so check it out. If you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out again to our awesome Family Resource Center representative. So thank you and keep up the great work. We appreciate you and we look forward to seeing you. And that's August the 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30, right in front of the Tishner, Ellen, Tishner Middle School and Lloyd High School. So in that parking lot. So we look forward to seeing you again on August the 11th. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. All righty. I will keep my mayor's report brief. I just want to remind everybody that the summer send-off is coming up and prep and planning is in full swing. September 24th, mark your calendars. It's four to 10. So if you're interested in participating as a volunteer, I know that I'm gonna be putting out the request to all council members to participate in the pie eating contest very soon, so your participation will be greatly appreciated. The Colonial Cottage is making a triumphant return to provide all of the, the pies for our event once again. So that will be coming in your emails very soon. And I guess we can talk, Chief Rader, do you want to talk at all about the addition? Yeah, if you want to tag-team it, that's fine. So I sent out an email to council earlier today. There was a request for assistance made from our, our counterparts in eastern Kentucky. They've lost a tremendous amount, including there's one county and city that has lost their entire fleet of police cruisers. So Chief Rader came to me.
So Whitesburg Police Department, think they're like a nine-man department and they lost all seven cruisers that they had that night. So like I put in that memo, I mean, I can't imagine being the chief down there dealing with that, let alone dealing with it with no police cars. I know some of the officers down there are using their own personal cars to drive around the community. We all know the issues that that brings with insurance and, you know, God forbid, something happens to their personal cars. They put out a statewide broadcast through the Kentucky Associations, Kentucky Association of Police and basically begged for cruisers. Some of the surrounding cities down there, for Whitesburg and Letcher County, were able to lend them a couple cars, but they need something long-term. I, I know, you know, like I said in that memo again, that $10,000 to $16,000, depending on, you know, the value that we can get at an auction. I understand that's a big ask for the city just to, to let that go. But I would also, you know, just say that hopefully, if something were ever to happen here, we would receive the same, you know, gratitude from, from other cities if, if they were available. The cars that are on that sheet are cars that were gonna be offline here. A couple of them have, it's very common in the Dodge Chargers, the lifters start to go out and that's a pretty significant cost, probably $3,000 to $4,000. Some of the cars, actually, I know, I think two of them that have that, that are parked over at the East Station. They'll probably get maybe a couple thousand miles out of those cars. Hopefully, that's enough time for them to, you know, get reimbursed through their insurance. I mean, we had a hard enough time getting cruisers ourself, just because of the way the, the market is for buying police cars. So you throw on top of that, I'm just asking, you know, for any bit of help that the city of Erlanger thinks is appropriate to, to give to them. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have about it. Go ahead.
Yeah, Chief, I, I mean, I know I saw that memo come out. I, I just, and I know we're having a difficult time getting cars as well. Does this put us, you know, in any potential situation where, where we're stuck or do we have a plan in place if, you know, all of a sudden we are out a few extra cruisers because of something else?
Yeah, so like I said, the cruisers that we want to donate to them are truly cars that we have had parked at the East Station and then over here in the Lloyd parking lot. We've kind of just been saving them in case something bad happens, you know, and we, and we do need them. But our cruisers that we actually ordered a year and a half ago, we got three of them on the road and I think there's two more, right? You know, we have two more that are getting the equipment installed in them as we speak. And then the cruisers that we were able to purchase in this year's budget are actually already all in and getting equipped as we speak. So we will have five, we'll have nine cars, new cars for us by the end of this month. So the timing on it is what kind of made me also think to send that out and ask for the donation.
So would some of the ones that are on the road now that are getting replaced, would those just be a couple backup cars for us then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else that they need that we may be able to offer to them?
The FOP bought a couple hundred dollars worth of water. Sam's donated, I think, a pallet of water today, Clorox wipes. So the plan is if you guys approve the donation, we're gonna load all that stuff up in the cruisers and take it down Thursday morning to them. So I think everything, the biggest thing is just they have no cars to drive. So that's their, that's their biggest issue right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's a great thing you're doing. I just got back down from, I just returned from eastern Kentucky and when we dropped off our supplies, it's literally, I mean, I've been in war zones before, it is like a war zone down there.
Right.
And people are so desperate. The police officers had no, they were using their private cars.
Right.
But people could come in, when we brought our supply truck in, people just literally came around our supply truck. We couldn't even unload it before people started just, I don't want to call it looting, but
Sure.
You've got really desperate, I don't mean to get graphic either, but you have children that are walking around in dirty diapers and stuff because they just, they have nothing. It's, it's unbelievable, so.
Yeah, they actually sent out a request today through KACP for manpower due to looting, so.
It's much needed. I mean, we, twice we had to, we had to make a call to the National Guard.
Right.
And they, they couldn't really do anything but drive past, but it was kind of enough to kind of keep a little bit of order.
Sure.
So if they could get a police force presence.
Right.
Man, that would be much needed.
Right.
I'm totally in support of us doing this. Whatever we can give them, I'm, I'm all for it. My only question is about the money that we would have gotten through the surplus. Is that considered in our budget at all? Okay, I just didn't know if that was, like, we factored that in as income or anything? Okay. Because I was just gonna say, I can think of things that we can cut if we need to, but if that's necessary. But if that's not factored in, then I don't have a concern about that at all. Give them whatever they need.
Chief, I think that is fabulous, you coming up with and brainstorming on donating possibly the cars to them. And like you said, I would think that people would help us if we were in the same situation. I think it's just being kind and helping one another, so I'm in favor of it.
Vicki?
I'm gonna say ditto to everything that's been said and I really believe that the citizens of Erlanger, if we ask them, the majority would say yes, let's, let's give them those surplus cruisers. And it's a great thing that you came up with, so thank you to everybody that was involved in this, but I think it's a great idea.
So one last thing too, I know it's not that big a deal, but we actually contacted Airport Towing and Airport Towing is going to volunteer, they're gonna take down two or four of our cars for us if it passes tonight for free of charge. And then that way, we only have to take a couple officers down there to, to drive everybody back, so.
I know this question is off-topic, but I think you bring up a good point. Are there other vehicles that we're looking to surplus that were not police cars that we could also surplus donating to another agency? I know we, we talked about a new, I think, utility truck that we were gonna buy. I don't know the condition of any of those, but I, I just, if we can think about it beyond just, you know, PD cruisers.
Yeah, I, I know Whitesburg has said, and I'm sure there's other agencies down there, if, we, we've been on the phone with them the last couple of days, kind of telling them what we're doing. They said that if we, if they get the cruisers that we're talking about, they will be good. Letcher County, their K-9 car was destroyed and we have the old K-9 spare as part of what you guys have on the list. So again, that'll, that'll take care of them. As far as the other, you know, Public Works and whatever they have, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm sure everybody needs something, but I have not been asked that. Anything else?
The only other car that we could do away with is Daryl Drew, it's Dodge Nitro. I think that's the only other one that's ready to go, right? Which is in pretty bad shape, but. It's not on the list, but it could be added if you wanted to.
Thank you.
Emmy, do you have anything to report?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Gatlin?
Couple of things, some of the legislation that's on tonight, we have a first reading of the wage scale ordinance. The ordinance that was sent out Friday was not accurate, that was my fault. I was without cell phone service for much of last week in East Tennessee. So the version that is tonight gonna be the first reading is what was discussed at the council committee meeting with, the, the pay scale was the same, but the verbiage that Mr. Meyer had suggested where we are still maintaining language saying that the, that we're repealing council being required to bless personnel policies of non-elected officials. So the non-elected officials are still established by ordinance and that's now clear in this ordinance. Okay, thanks. We discussed the municipal order as it related to surplusing property. We also split up the text amendment that Ms. Randall talked about two weeks ago into two different text amendments, proposed resolutions for text amendments, and then the final document is kind of a housekeeping issue. At the last meeting, we passed the inter-local agreement or the proposed inter-local agreement with PDS. But the AG's office, who has to bless those inter-local agreements, had a little bit of a housekeeping issue. So Section 13 would be added to that inter-local agreement, which specifically says the party shall separately acquire, hold and dispose of any real or personal property used by them in executing this agreement. Obviously, there is no real or personal property that's being shared between us and PDS, but the AG wanted that language added to the inter-local agreement. So that's all that this document is doing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, do you have anything to report?
Good evening. Talk about capital projects, streets, Kimberly Drive, Debbie Lane, Mitten Drive and Jaclyn Drive will be getting started this year. Michael's Construction will be doing that work. They're gonna try to do a lot of Kimberly as much as they can while school is on fall break, so it doesn't inconvenience school with the sidewalks and that. That's all milling overlay with all new sidewalks. And like I said, Michael's Construction received that. Under parks, Erlanger Road Master Plan kickoff meeting is next week on August 11th with Chris Manning and the Human Nature Team. It'll be here at the city building at 10 o'clock next Thursday. Pretty excited about that. Nature's Touch in the park, big project, lot of really neat things I think they're gonna bring to the table and we'll be able to show you, so. And then the last thing I have is that we have a Phase 2 stormwater permit audit. Was scheduled for August 10th. Unfortunately, it's been canceled, so that'll be coming up probably sometime in September. And that's all I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. All right, are there any other reports from department heads? Ms. Hoffman?
This month, the person that we are recognizing whose name is on the Friendship Garden wall is retired employee Chad Gerdler. Chad retired as a lieutenant in the Police Department in 2021 after 20 years of dedicated service. His information is on the website, erlangerky.gov under About on the Friendship Garden wall and it was also today put on social media.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Anybody else? All right. Are there any task forces to report? Mr. Nipper?
Mayor, I had forwarded, I apologize, Ms. Hoffman, for being kind of out of commission for a while, but I've been in and out of the state. I had forwarded the emergency task force findings that we had come up with. Seems kind of apropos now to get those out and it seems to be just in time too, because I think there's a lot of good suggestions and different things that we could go over and I had sent, I guess, a cumulative list to share of what I was thinking of putting out. My overall goal was to get, to run by council, make sure everybody was good with, you know, what really was on the list, but also how we want to distribute that out. I know there were some suggestions of maybe putting hand copies or hard copies for the summer send-off, but also posting it on the website, it's got a lot of great links to government websites and what to do in the event of an emergency, so. Wanted to thank Chief Raider and everybody else again, the Fire Department, everybody who contributed to it, because everybody gave a lot of great advice and I think it's, like I said, it's a really good, it'll be a really good document for people just to have in case there is an emergency that crops up. So thanks.
Thank you so much. Any other task forces? Ms. Skidmore?
I just had a couple of quick sentences for Kenton County Alliance. We had our first meeting today right before school's ready to start and kind of kicked around a lot of things and next month, the meeting is gonna be at the public, at Kenton County Public Library as it has always been.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have three bids on the agenda this evening. Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, so we, concrete street replacement on Sigma Drive, Kappa and Theta Court. We had three bids, Jefferson Contracting at a bid of $665,465. Humphreys Concrete at $667,290. And Michael Construction at $976,500. So, we also had, that was on July 13th was the bid opening on that one. Sidewalk replacement was July 27th. Humphreys Construction bid was $184,165. And Hare Construction was $249,150. That should finish Zone 2 and hopefully start us in Zone 3 for the sidewalk replacement program. And then the street striping was the same day on July 27th. We had two bids, First Star Safety at $33,048.96. And then ANA Safety at $43,034.16. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any unfinished business this evening? Any new business this evening? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, Mayor, I think as I mentioned earlier, I just wanted to, I know Mr. Gatlin's gonna put together that list, but, you know, after talking with him, I know we were originally in, council had asked for an item to be on the agenda for legislation tonight and that isn't here, but the, the list of items that we were looking and, and to clarify what the capital fund can be used for, I know that Ms. Kyle, the, the one item that is there that's restricted is the payroll taxes designated to, I think, the road funds. But the other items that we're looking at are essentially vehicles, any Public Works equipment, public facilities, land acquisition, Police Department, capitalizable equipment including, but not limited to radars, radar units and firearms. Thank you, Chief. Fire Department capitalized equipment, some grant projects, MARF projects, sidewalks, sidewalk maintenance and asphalt and contract or concrete roads. So that would, that would be language that would move the money from general fund unrestricted reserves into capital fund to make sure that we've got the funds there for the next several years. So, so with that, Mayor, I know there was some talk about having some additional discussion. I'd like to ask that we have a special meeting so we can potentially have a first reading at the August 16th caucus meeting and we can discuss any more detail about, about that project then.
Okay. Any other new business? All right. Legislation?
All right, first is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing a personnel pay and classification plan for all Erlanger employees and non-elected city officers and repealing Sections 3503, 3504 of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, which was ordinance 2454. What's underlined is what's changed, so this is the new pay plan for fiscal year 2023. We are repealing Section 3504 as it relates to job titles and position counts and the also would be making it clear that the job specifications, essential functions, duties, qualifications, and other characteristics of each position would be established by the personal policies of the city and by ordinance for non-elected officials. Those are already established by ordinance. If you look to the Google Doc, which is the second page, you'll see the pay bands that are changing, pay bands B through I have had changes either to their minimum or maximum or both, and pay band A will remain the same. This is a first reading. When I said, I'm sorry, A through R, we go all the way to R in the city. So, so go to back to page two and three. So A through R have changes, B through R have changes, A is remaining the same.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you could please note the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance, please.
Next, we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. You can see attached the items that are being surplus. Two wood office decks, desks by Public Works are being disposed as garbage because of age and poor condition. And then we have the five Dodge Chargers that were discussed by Chief Raider, 2011 Dodge Charger, 2013 Dodge Charger, 2016 Dodge Charger, 2012 Dodge Charger and a 2015 Dodge Charger that are being surplus due to age, condition and/or high mileage, and those would be transferred to another governmental agency without compensation. I don't think there was, was there any interest to add that other car? All right.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mrs. Elmore, Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Next, we have a resolution sponsoring a proposed text amendment. Again, this was discussed several times at length at last meeting. This is merely a resolution sponsoring a proposed text amendment. It is not the text amendment. The idea is here is that this would be an application that would be made by Ms. Randall to PDS, who then would present it to KCPC for a public hearing. It then would come back to this body and be required to be passed by this body in a first and second reading. So the first proposed resolution for an application to make a text amendment would be to remove multifamily from the list of permitted uses within the Business Park District and any additional standards to apply to use within that zone.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle? Ms. Elmore? Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the, I, my, I just wanted to make sure my comments are heard again on this one again in, in disagreement with moving forward with applying for the text amendment. We do have a housing problem in the area and we especially have an affordable housing problem. Before I came to the meeting tonight, as many know, I am involved with Saint Vincent in Nepal and I visited someone and we had a client that needed some assistance. And I'm standing with them, I'm not going into their house because it's roach infested. It's got significant water leaks. And my question to them was, well, you know, are you looking for additional housing? They said they would love to, but they can't afford it. And, you know, they said, really, the house probably needs to be condemned. They're, they're dealing with a slumlord that, that won't do anything to the property. And when we look at, I think, this area, it is one of the, you know, I think, few areas where, you know, I think, you know, multifamily would, would work, which is why we included it, we added it to this zone when we went through Z21 and all the, the effort and the conversation that was there. So, you know, to, to think that we're, we're gonna try to So, you know, to, to think that we're, we're going to try to, you know, just make it more challenging, yes, there's still an opportunity to do additional stuff, but this is just going to make it more difficult to add some additional affordable housing in our, in our area. And, and that's really where I, you know, I think we, we definitely need a significant lift. Making it more difficult is not, not necessarily helping our overall community.
Ms. Reckers?
I thought we discussed the PUD overlay. So, if we remove this, is that an option? Would that be done before? I just want to make sure, should it be part of this, or is that done in addition, like...
That can be done at any time. They can, so, when, before Z21 changed, it had the PUD overlay available within that particular zone. Now, because we've reduced the limits necessary in order to change a zone, they can come in front of KCPC and come in front of council with a PUD and change the zone under the agreement of KCPC and council.
So, so that I understand, even if we remove housing, there's the option for housing to come in with the PUD?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because I just want to make sure I understood that. I had Ms. Randall send me the slides after our long meeting a couple weeks ago, because I really wanted to fully understand that. I'm a huge supporter of housing, just my involvement in the community. It's so desperate that we need it, but seeing that the, the PUD changes dropped from 20 to five acres, I thought that was extremely reasonable to be brought before council. So, my opinion over the last two weeks has changed. I just wanted to make sure that this stipulation was still part of the future plan, should someone want to bring it before council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Thank you. I just wanted on record that I agree with everything that Mr. Meyer said. I won't support something that puts up a barrier to affordable housing or multifamily housing, which, as Mr. Meyer said, is desperately needed in our community, and I just, I just don't understand saying no to it, especially in that area. I drive by there at least three times a week, and to me, it's a logical place for it. We literally have side, we, we had it in our budget to put sidewalks in on that road, on Dolwick. And I even said at the time, why are we funding sidewalks in a non-residential area where there's not a lot of people that are walking when we have residential areas in Erlanger that don't have any sidewalks? So, to me, it's a logical place to put multifamily housing. The, the parcels are sitting there unused right now, and I just think it makes sense to leave that option on the table for those parcels.
And my only counter to that is the option is still on the table. It just is based on a parcel-by-parcel scenario that then comes in front of council.
Ms. Kyle?
I was going to say exactly what you just said. I want to go on record that I'm not against multifamily, but I think it's wise if council does have a final say. And again, I am against slumlords, and I think that if that's going on in Erlanger, we probably have something on our record where we could go in there and investigate that complaint, I thought we did, and straighten it out. So, I don't know if Mr. Meyer was talking about a resident in Erlanger, because I know that's why we have people register their buildings when they rent. So, I would hope that, you know, Erlanger would do something about that, because it's not humane, it's not right.
I, I would agree it's not right, but I think most people are afraid to make a complaint out of not being able to find a place to live when they're, when they're kicked out. It is unfortunate, but it is the, the situation that is there.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Motion carried.
All right, next, we have a resolution, again, sponsoring a proposed text amendment, same thing. It is a resolution to make application to, for PDS to look at it and then make recommendations to KCPC for a public hearing. This would be, this particular request is to add language within the use-specific standards to allow temporary uses in construction trailers. The Z21 blueprint provided language to allow for temporary uses in construction trailers. However, this language was not adopted as part of the new zoning ordinance. Ms. Randall feels that the addition of this language could be beneficial moving forward. In addition, a character standard will be added to clarify that mobile trailers are not permitted as permanent commercial buildings.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
All right, finally, we have the addendum to the interlocal agreement for the Unified One-Stop Shop for codes administration. Again, this is just supplementing the resolution that we passed two weeks ago related to the interlocal agreement, which adds the Section 13, which clarifies to the attorney, or to the state, that the party shall separately acquire, hold, and dispose of any real or personal property used by them in executing this agreement. Again, there will be no real or personal property that will be shared between us and PDS.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Kyle, Mr. Nipper? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, are there any announcements this evening? Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.